Okay, Council, let's start the legislation to be discussed in our pre-meeting conference dated October 18th, 2023. It's all after six. Let's start with Resolution Number One. It's a proclamation for Fire Week. It's sponsored by every council member. Is there any discussion on this piece of legislation? Okay, discussion is closed. Let's move to the next piece. Our next piece of legislation is an E and A transfer. It's ordinance number two. It's concerning Section Eight. We got retirement. Is anybody who sits on Board of V and A like to explain this to us briefly?
I mean, the description is pretty much...
Pretty tough.
Wages is going out into office equipment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this piece, this transfer, ordinance number two? Discussion is closed on ordinance number...
I actually just have one question. On the original budget, it says transfers in, transfers out. Sixty-five thousand, but there's no transfers in and transfers out.
What? Oh, you mean on the eight oh one line?
Yes.
So where's the total of thirty-three thousand dollars? Because there's fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand, but none of those budget...
She's right. There's a type of line.
There's none of those budget transfers that add up.
Something's missing.
Well, the eight oh one line just doesn't need to be there at all. We didn't take anything out of the eight oh one line.
Yeah, it says eighteen thousand dollars from. And then there's the four seventy-one line that says fifteen thousand dollars out. And none of those total amounts add up, so those numbers gotta be reconfigured before you vote on anything.
Good catch.
Want to call the Director?
Well, it's the same thing on the next... It's on number thirteen also the same way. Hmm.
No, it's my point. There's an actual type on there.
So what are we doing?
So you gotta put them in committee until you figure both of them out.
Yeah. No, just don't... We should kick it back to the E and A. Because if that's how it was passed at E and A, then we gotta kick it back to the E and A.
Okay. Discharge the pieces?
Don't even introduce them.
Okay.
Okay, I just...
Can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
So how does something like this happen?
What's that?
Just what I'm saying. So you guys go to the meeting. We agree you're gonna do this. We all have no problem. But how does it come out not written up wrong? Like, where does it just come out of E and A wrong?
Well, there's two things. One, I need to go back and look at the piece that was in the actual packet to make sure that it actually reflects this exact thing, which I'm sure it probably does. And then if the explanation is that we passed it this way...
Do you have the E and...
We read through the account lines and didn't look at the actual rest of it, and we made a mistake.
Clerk, can we check the minutes of that?
That's what I'm saying. We'd have to go back and look at the minutes.
Right, but like something like this, now our next meeting's in two weeks. Is that... I mean, something like this could be like important, right?
First off, well, there's two things. One, the actual ordinance is correct. Because the ordinance is the from with the account line and the amounts, and the to with the account line and the amounts. The rest of it is literally part of the explanation. Okay? But because of what Councilperson Colosseum Testa is bringing up, I'm saying we should probably look at this to make sure the accounts... This... All these listings is the explanation. All we need to pass in E and A and through the councils, the top piece, the actual ordinance. The fact that this doesn't match this is why I'm saying we should probably just wait and go back and look at it.
Right.
But this wouldn't be invalid if we had.
Okay.
We asked for the account numbers and the name of the accounts to be listed for the legislation when we pass that.
Right, as an explanation. So it's a normal protocol.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question. It just tells you the balance is sixty-five...
This is the same thing.
Like I said, this is a hundred percent.
Am I seeing something wrong? It says original fashion.
Right, so the original budget and what we could have budgeted for could have been that sixty... So we'll say, for example, when we passed the budget, the original budget that we appropriated for that line was sixty-five thousand dollars. Right? So what they did on that line, so for eight oh one, was the Section Eight retirement, is they took eighteen thousand dollars out of that account. So what you would see was transferred in zero, transferred out eighteen thousand dollars. And the balance before should be whatever it would be, and then plus the expended, which would be eighteen.
Well, so we're assuming that. This is an explanation block, which could have been just cut and pasted from another block, and it wasn't put together right. So if we want to actually see those accounts and the drawdowns, we could pull the cash report literally out of our email. We just got it like three days ago. But like I said, the explanation begs question, so...
How will we just refer to committee, and then if there's a quick amendment, we can take care of it from there?
Well, you're gonna have to amend it, so they're better off introducing a new piece.
Hang on. Just may I have the floor for a minute?
Yes.
All right. This is the explanation, not the ordinance. The piece we're looking at with the account explanation, showing the accounts, that's not the actual ordinance. You following what I'm getting at? So we need to look at this to make sure it's correct, the ordinance part. But amendment-wise, we won't have to make an amendment. We're just...
I don't think we do. That's what I'm saying. I don't know the bottom... See, I don't know what transfers in into each account from. So actually, it went to and from, and the bottom is supposed to be some kind of explanation or breakdown, so it's right.
Correct, and the breakdown doesn't match.
So realistically, we're doing our job. Anything over fifteen thousand dollars, we have to, you know, verify. So it's up to the council. They can do two things. Either vote on this tonight or...
No, no, no. I'm not saying... Hold on.
All right, let's put it in committee then. All right? Be good?
All right.
All right, let's go next. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Irving. And the calling for a public hearing on the sale of thirteen eighteen Seymour Ave. Councilman Irving, are you in favor of this public hearing?
Um, yes.
Okay. Number three, we'll be voting on it tonight, and number four, we'll refer to it. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Irving for the sale of two Holbarth Street. It's calling for a public hearing. Councilman Irving, are you in favor of the sale?
Um, yes.
Calling for the public hearing is Resolution Number Five. And ordinance number six is the sale. Refer to committee. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Iello for the sale of eleven twenty-four and twelve hundred Parker Street. Are you in favor of the sale?
Yes, ma'am.
Calling for the public hearing, Resolution Number Seven. And corresponding legislation, number eight, refer to committee. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Burmaster for the sale of fourteen oh two Martin Street. Calling for a public hearing. Are you in favor of calling for a public hearing, Mr. Burmaster?
I'm good for that.
Number ten is the sale of fourteen oh two Martin Street. Refer to committee. We're on legislation number eleven. It's sponsored by Councilman Burmaster for the sale of fourteen seventeen Erie Street. It's calling for a public hearing. Councilman Burmaster, are you in favor of calling for the public hearing for the sale of Erie Street?
Yeah, good.
Next piece of legislation, refer to committee, is the actual sale certificate. Okay, we have another E and A transfer. I'm assuming that the council would like to refer this to committee also.
Why?
Well, it's got the same basics.
The same problems as the other one?
Why?
Well, there's no transfer in. If you're doing the first one in committee, why...
No, then that's the out.
No, the top part's fine. The top part's just explanatory. It's the bottom part that...
The E and A transfer is seventy-five.
Yeah, but then you have twenty-five going in, right? And then four five one is five thousand, right? But...
So here's your question. Here's your question. What part of...
No, so here's my point. After this transfer is complete, a transfer in is gonna be reflected.
Right, but it's still the transfer in, so...
Oh, I see the way she did it.
You see what I'm saying? So like right now, right now, there's only four hundred forty-four dollars and eighty cents left in that account, right? But that's why we're transferring in five thousand. And then if we look at this after this transfer is complete, you'll see that there should be five thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and eighty cents in that as a balance. And then transfers in should be reflected as five thousand the next time we look at it. Because this is cumulative.
See, and I don't know about the seventy-five thousand, if that's included the thirty thousand or not.
Right, but also why would the transfer in reflect the twenty-five thousand?
No, seventy-five is out.
Right, but why would it reflect the transfer in of twenty-five thousand dollars? You got the transfer in...
Because you are taking it out of wages. You see the line one oh two?
No, the transfer in, this might be the second transfer. Because look at, the original budget's fifty.
The first line is a breakdown of one oh two. Okay, you see that one oh two? So you would contemplate that if money's coming out, you would see a deduction, right, of thirty thousand. We don't know if it's within the seventy-five thousand or not, so that's your question.
No, no, it shouldn't be. Because it hasn't happened yet until we pass it.
But it says balance before transfer.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Before transfer.
So the thirty thousand's gotta be somewhere between the differences. I'm trying to figure it out now. I don't see it.
No, it's not gonna be reflected yet until after the transfer.
Okey-dokey. Well, let's have somebody explain to us in its entirety. Maybe we're not seeing something.
Correct.
Is everybody okay to refer this to committee?
Yes.
Okay. I'll look that over if I want to look at that specifically. All right, our last piece of legislation is a resolution sponsored by every council member. It's calling for the sale of wine and beer for FX Brewery nigh downtown, Sunday, December thirty-first. Oh, it's New Year's Eve. Is everybody in favor of this permit? Any questions?
No.
Okay. Discussion is closed on the last piece of legislation. In...
Hold on a second. Go back to that first E and A transfer.
First one?
Yes. It's because this is the explanation... She's presenting the explanations of the accounts before it actually takes effect, because we hadn't passed it yet. So if you look at four seven one on ordinance two, right? Just throw this out there.
Okay.
All right, you've got twenty-one thousand and change, right, original budget. Then you've got a balance before transfer of sixteen thousand four hundred fifty-five. Then you've got four hundred thirty-two expended and five grand already transferred out from a previous transfer. Add all that up, it makes perfect sense.
Right, but...
Now, hang on, hold on. Then the next account we're coming out of, okay, has sixty-five thousand in it, and it says percentage used, zero percent. That's why it says transfers in, out, expended are all zero. After this transfer is completed, you'll see a transfer out of eighteen thousand. Then line two oh one still makes perfect sense because nothing has happened to that account yet until this transfer happens. So after this transfer, what we should see is a balance after of thirty-six dollars, we're adding thirty-three. Neither of these are wrong. I don't think either of these are wrong. She's just showing the explanation of the accounts before the ordinance is in effect.
Prior to posting.
Their state, their status as of the moment that we are...
Yes, that's my point.
It's not the way that they were presented.
It's a new way to present it.
Yeah, but I'm telling you the exact explanation, and it makes perfect sense.
Your explanation could make sense, but it's not the way of what has been presented before, and it's not the way that she's analyzing.
Okay, well, we don't pass what's in the explanation. We pass the ordinance. And I'm telling you as a board member of E and A that it makes perfect sense that we can pass it.
So we're telling you, then just eliminate the account piece, eliminate anything after the explanation. Because it's not... I want to know what's being transferred in and what's being transferred out.
I have an old one.
You're seeing it.
I have an old one.
In real time.
Yes.
It makes perfect sense with a calculator.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not what the... That was not the intent of the original transfer in and transfer out explanation. The transfer in was the amount of money that they were taking from one account and placing it into the other. That's the reason what the balance was before the transfer. We know what it is.
That is shown. If you said... This is a rundown of the account. If this said transfers out and had the amount of money that is out of it before we pass it, that would be incorrect in the explanation. It would be wrong. This is correct.
I know that's not... She's presenting it in a way that's not... That's not what we're asking for in the original explanation.
Well, you have an old one.
That's who I was talking to, because I'm only talking about it for about half an hour.
Yep, we have an old one. It's ordinance number two. We have one that we just passed, eight twenty-one, twenty-three. It does the same thing, has zero amounts and a transfer in and transfer out.
We missed that one too.
Well, we're missing off a lot of them. I think we missed every one we did this year, Samantha.
This is completely accurate and makes perfect sense.
Yes, I think you're right, Michael. I think you're right. But if it's nothing that we have to worry about, I don't think it's something that's needed.
We need to transfer that money to keep us rolling, don't we?
Right. Our intent is to transfer what's on top of the...
Run down.
That's our intent. It's up to the council, whatever they want to do. I'm comfortable with that, because we are already completing our intent. Other than that, let's go to...
So what are we doing? We're putting them in committee then?
Up to you guys.
I'm good with them.
I'm good with either.
Could I speak?
All right, well, Samantha, those are...
It's saying exactly that, let's say, four seven one, sixty thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars in the account. We're gonna take out fifteen thousand. They're telling us the money's there. We're allowed... We could pass it. The second one, sixty-five thousand's in the account. We're gonna take eighteen of that sixty-five. And then the third one, there's only three thousand in it, but we're adding thirty-three to it. So they're telling us exactly what they're doing. It's fine. I'm okay with it.
It's in two different places. I'm good with it too.
All right, Samantha, you're the only one guessing.
Listen, I'm not the only one, but I would like a better explanation of what the accounts are after. I don't remember the...
Because it's an order.
Hold on a second. If you want the explanation after, you can't... It's gonna be not accurate, because we didn't do it yet. Until we do this, this doesn't change.
When we originally answered, did you have the account?
All right, well...
Well, Samantha, it's up to you. If you want to bring it out, you can bring it out, or you leave it. You make the motion when it comes out.
No, it's gotta be unanimous. It's gotta be unanimous, Sam.
Like I said, she can make the motion.
If you move on that or...
All right, let's get on to...
Well, I'm going by him. He's on it. He says it's right.
Councilman Irving, we have one more. We have ordinance fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there's one more that came to us late. I didn't get the chance to visit this constituent until yesterday. He is permanently disabled, has a handicap tag and all of that. He likes to be able to park in front of his house. He lives on Lynn Jav, and the parking is allowed on his side of the street. He likes to be able to park in front of his house, and often finds that neighbors around him park in front of his house, and he would just like to make it handicap parking. I didn't have the chance to speak to the chief until now. We are gonna... If we... I would like to pass this tonight if we could. And the chief and I will both make sure to explain to him that this is not his personal parking space, but a handicap space that anybody with an appropriate hang tag can use. And I didn't... I do apologize for the late submission, but I spoke to this man only yesterday. And I did speak to the chief, and you're fine with it, chief?
I'm fine with it.
Great.
Any additional discussion on this legislation then? It is a... It's an ordinance, so is everybody on board with it? Okay, very good.
Thank you, everybody.
We do have two pieces in committee. I'm assuming that they're staying in committee. Is anything coming out of committee to hold for discussion?
Okay. Is there a motion to close our pre-conference meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? We're closed. Okay. Council members, you have a little bit of time to relax. Thank you.
... 2023, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the common council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aiello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice Williamson, Klassimo Testa, Debrango, Galemi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
First, we do declare the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening, the minutes of the previous meeting. The minutes of the previous meeting were posted on E code three sixty, delivered to the councilor review, and also for the public. Would we like to read them?
Motion to accept the minutes, Mr. President.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. They've been accepted and dispensed. Thank you. We have no public hearing this evening. There were no pieces to hold a public hearing on. Can we have public comment? Can we grab the sheet?
There's nothing under here. There's not even a sheet.
Was anyone here to sign up for public comment? All right, very good. I was going to change the order of business anyhow, but public comment is now closed since no one is here to speak. We do have a guest, multiple guests actually, Andy Cross, the Assistant Engineer, and Mike Mahana, who will be arborist. They are here to present. Would you like to come forward? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm honored to be here and talk about this grant. I want to come here and inform everyone what we have, what we got from the USDA. So, as Mike, Mr. Galemi said, my name's Andy Kares. For those that don't know, I'm from the Engineering Department, Assistant Engineer. I've been there about eighteen years, and I had the fortune of being in the private sector for another eighteen years. So, I've been around, had a little experience here and there. But anyways, this grant, there's a lot of grants out there, as we all know, and just to let you know, I'm not a grant writer, but I kept having folks from DEC, DLT, et cetera, people that have gone, or I've got to know over the years, asking me, is the city applying for this? Why isn't the city applying for this? So, I was very tired of hearing that. And I said, look, we got, we got to do this. There's so many grants that the city's missing out on. So, what I did is I went and looking for a grant writer, and we had a former team, myself, the grant writer, and a professor from NVCC, Brian Jidiki. That was our grant team. So, what that brought, how that came about is in April of two thousand twenty-three, I got an email from my friend in Albany, DEC, Michelle Higgins, saying there's a notice of funding opportunity for a USDA urban forestry grant. And just to quote Michelle, at the end of her email, she said, "This really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Good luck, everyone." So, I took that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity as my start, you know, shot fired off, run, get this done, apply, at least apply. And so, that's, that was the beginning of it. Previous, previously to that, I did apply for a small DEC grant, which we also got. It partnered with Olmsted, excuse me, partner with Rotary and Green Utica at this time, formerly Central New York Conservancy. But, so, at that point, early May, two thousand twenty-three, I found, I formed the grant team, and we called a roundtable, people that I thought would make a good, make great partners, because that's the key, obviously. We want to use community partners. Right, right in the caucus room, we actually started the first roundtable in early May. And I just got to mention this, Councilwoman Friend just happened to be in the right place at the right time. She joined us for that meeting, and I think she contributed quite a bit. She also gave me the connection to Senator Schumer's office. So, that was, I think that was a key letter of support from the Senator's Office. Anyways, so, that being said, we formed a team of eleven community partners, and I gave everyone, what I gave you actually is the grant application as we applied for it. It will be going through some changes, but just mentioning the partners. So, we had Homestead City, Phil Bean. Phil, be.
Iello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice Williamson, Klassimo Testa, Debrango, Glimi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
First order of business this evening, the minutes of the previous meeting.
Uh, the minutes of the previous meeting were posted on E code three sixty, delivered to the councilor review, and also for the public. Would we like to read them?
Motion to, uh, accept the minutes, Mr. President.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. They've been accepted and dispensed. Thank you. We have no public hearing this evening. There were no pieces to hold a public hearing on. Do we have public comment? Can we grab a sheet?
Nothin' under here. There's not even a sheet.
Was anyone here to sign up for public comment? All right, very good. I was going to, uh, change the order of business anyhow, but, uh, public comment is now closed since no one is here to speak. Uh, we do have a guest, multiple guests actually, Andy Cross, the Assistant Engineer, and Mike Mahana, who will be, uh, arborist. Um, they are here to present. Would you like to come forward? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to be here and, uh, talk about this grant. Uh, just, I wanna come here and inform everyone what we have, uh, what we got from the USDA. Uh, so, as Mike, Mr. Glimy said, um, my name's Andy Caris. For those that don't know, I'm from the Engineering Department, Assistant Engineer. I've been there about eighteen years, and I had the fortune of being in the private sector for another eighteen years. So I've been around, uh, had a little experience here and there. But anyways, um, this grant, um, there's a lot of grants out there, as we all know, and, uh, just to let, you know, I'm not a grant writer, but I kept having folks from DEC, DLT, and et cetera, people that have gone, or I've got to know over the years, asking me, is the city applying for this? Why isn't the city applying for this? So I, I, I was very tired of hearing that. And I said, look, we got, we gotta do this. There's so many grants that the city's missing out on. So what I did is I went and looking for a grant writer, and we had a former team, myself, the grant writer, and a professor from NVCC, uh, Brian Jidiki. That was our grant team. So what that brought, how that came about is in April of two thousand twenty-three, I got an email from my friend in Albany, DEC, Michelle Higgins, saying there's a notice of funding opportunity for a USDA urban forestry grant. And just to quote Michelle, at the end of her email, she said, "This really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Good luck, everyone." So I took that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity as, as my start, you know, shot fired off, run, get this done, apply, at least apply. And so that's, uh, that was the beginning of it. Previous, previously to that, I did apply for a small DEC grant, uh, which we also got. Um, it partnered with, uh, um, Olmst, excuse me, it, uh, partner with Rotary and, um, Green Utica at this time, formerly, uh, Central New York Conservancy. But, uh, so at that point, early, uh, May two thousand twenty-three, I found, I, I, I formed the grant team, and, uh, we called a roundtable, people that I, I thought would make a good, make great partners, 'cause that's the key, obviously. We, we wanna use community partners. Um, right, right in the caucus room, we actually started the first roundtable in, uh, early May. And I just gotta mention this, uh, Councilwoman Friend just happened to be in the right place at the right time. She joined us for that meeting, and I think she contributed quite a bit. She also gave me the connection to Senator Schumer's office. So that, that was, I think that was a key, uh, letter of support from the Senator, Senator's office. Anyways, um, so, that being said, we formed a team of eleven community partners. And, uh, I gave everyone, what I gave you actually is the grant application as we applied for it. Um, it will be going through some changes, but just, uh, mentioning the partners. So we had Homestead City, Phil Bean and his folks, United County Off, Officer Workforce Development, and Dave Math, Dave Mathis, Mog Valley Economic Development District, which actually, two of those folks are here, Heather Devitt and Samantha. Glad to work with them, this grant. They also worked with me for a DEC grant. They actually funded the money, so I could go after that. Um, another partner, Mojave Valley Community College, Cornell Cooperative Extension, uh, Utica, this is a big one, Utica City School District. Now, so we can view this as a tree grant, but really, this is a lot of outreach. A lot of, a lot of outreach to the schools, to the refugee community, the immigrants. A lot of outreach to the communities. We wanna educate the folks, the benefits of the trees, and we want them to know how they can affect change in their community. So we plan on doing a lot in this Utica School District, and I, obviously, I'm looking at the two of you. Obviously, uh, you know, you work there. Um, if there's any ideas you have, I'd be glad to hear them. Uh, Rotary, another, uh, another partner, you know, the Rotary does a tree, annual tree planting. Uh, hopefully, they'll be doing more with, with this grant. Uh, Central New York Conservancy, Green Utica now, uh, the Municipal United County Solowaysh Authority. So this is where we come into the repurposing, recycling. We wanna, those trees have been, the, the urban forest has been such a decline in the city. Uh, it's been where we have to go in, and actually with Mike, the Certified Arborist, just a little bit on that, Mike's actually a local guy from East Utica. Believe it or not, I'm a local guy from West Utica. He went to Proctor, I went to UFA. But you know what? We're gonna work together on this one. There's not gonna be any, uh, butting heads. 'Cause Mike's really excited to do this, and I'm really excited to do this, and we're, we're gonna make this work really good. So, uh, so, so the authority will be repurposing, recycling, where we actually cut, we have to trim, cut, mulch, work with the authority. Um, there's one of the members, we're gonna get that, and we're gonna use that mulch with the tree plains, plantings that we're gonna do. Uh, Community Foundation, another partner. Um, the center, the center, we wanna educate the refugees, the Refugee Center. We want them to be able to understand the benefits of the tree. And when we educate the kids in the school, we want those kids to come home and explain to their parents the benefits. And also, those parents get a little bit of education in communities, in the Refugee Center, that's working it from both sides. So that's another partner. And the last, and probably the most important, uh, support letter is from Senator Schumer. So that's the ten, or excuse me, eleven members, the eleven community partners that we have. So resuming the process, June first, we had our grant submitted. This was the USDA Inflation Reduction Act. This was a very large, uh, grant pot. So we were obviously one of the applicants. The USDA received and reviewed eight hundred forty-two project proposals from across the United States requesting more than six point four billion for amazing work in the places where more than eighty percent of Americans live, work, and play. So obviously, you can see this is a very big thing for us. September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Agriculture Secretary Tom Lilsec announces the USDA Forest Service is awarding more than one point five billion to communities in all fifty states, District Columbia and several US Territories and tribal nations, um, et cetera. So the Forest Service selected, out of the eight hundred somewhat applicants and the six point four billion, they selected three hundred eighty-five grant proposals in, in the fifty states that I mentioned. We were one of them. So that's what brings me here. I just wanna let everyone know, uh, this is a five-year grant, and, uh, we're gonna be, the grant, the, the tree team will be doing a lot out there. This grant is in the seventeen disadvantaged communities, so that touches every one of your districts. As you can see by the map here, and I've attached a map to the handout, every one of your districts has disadvantaged, uh, it's the red outline. That being said, I'm sure, uh, a quick video from the USDA could explain this a lot better than I can. So I'm gonna stop talking. Um, my AV guy maybe will turn this on for me. He's not only arborist, he's my AV guy. Oops, sorry about that. Maybe I'm not a good, uh, AV guy.
He's in training.
Urban trees are the hardest-working trees in the park. Having more trees and more access to green spaces is critical for our communities. Inflation Reduction Act brought this program, one point five billion dollars, and that one point five billion dollars is historic. It's not just historic, it's epic. This will allow us to get in communities that we've never been able to get into, and we have a chance to engage these communities with resources, with education, with outreach. So we wanna engage these communities and build this trust. We wanna make sure that we are cooling temperatures by planting more trees, and we expect all the sustainability opportunities to come through these funds. Communities are desperately experiencing the impacts of climate change. Having more trees and more access to green spaces is critical. And so we don't wanna forget, eighty-four percent of Americans live, work, and play in these communities. These are trees where people reside, not just where they recreate. And we're excited to bring these green spaces and these cooling opportunities to communities, especially after a summer like this. We are in extreme heat conditions, rising temperatures. Our urban heat islands are expanding the mortality surrounding communities from extreme heat. That's been a true call to action to bring in more tree installations. We need more trees in communities, more green spaces. We see a lot of pop-ups flooding in our cities, in our urban centers. And that is because of the built environment. We're so paved over. We have so much surface. And not only is that surface contributing to the high temperatures, but those storm water doesn't have anywhere else to go. So we're watching our sewers pumping harder than they've ever pumped before. Whereas these green space types of installations will provide an opportunity for additional filtering of water and absorption of that excess storm water runoff. I would like to express that the benefits of trees are limitless. When it comes to air quality, the trees in our communities, around our communities, are filtering those pollutants. They're reducing carbon dioxide in our communities. And as someone with an asthmatic child, there is so much that we can learn from including the green spaces in our communities. From a public health aspect, we are seeing so much more healing, the healing that comes through access to green space in nature. The more we get out into our communities, the more we have access to green space, there's an opportunity for us, for our mental health to flourish. We are committed to no less than forty percent of the benefit of our programs' resources touch those who are most disadvantaged and vulnerable. And so we have accepted that responsibility. What I wanna say personally from this program, from this agency, from USDA, we are so excited about this opportunity, but we did not get here alone. We are so grateful for our communities who applied, our partners who stepped up and applied and submitted proposals, not just for their existing communities that they were working with, but communities that they wanted to help us get into gap account. So for faith-based organizations, for our tribal communities coming in, our universities who stood up in a big way, our states, our local governments, we want to sustain these investments, and we wanna sustain these relationships.
All right, so that, I'm gonna, uh, hand it over to Mike. He is the tree expert. He is a certified arborist. He's got a slideshow, and, uh, we can listen to the expert.
Well, first of all, thanks for inviting me here tonight. Um, and congrats to Andy and his crew. This is monumental for this city. And I know that firsthand. I've been a certified arborist for thirty years. I've been a thirty-year member of the New York State Arborists Association. And for years, I've seen cities get these grants and increase their canopies, and I'm like, why can't we? You know, Utica's gotta try to get some of these grants, and it's finally happened. Um, twenty years ago, the city of Rome, a colleague of mine was the arborist there, they received this, uh, same, almost same type of grant twenty years ago. And you can drive through those neighborhoods today and see where those trees were planted, and it's, it's just unbelievable, the change in the communities. Um, and that's some of the things that, you know, that I'll point out. They pointed out a lot of, um, the things in their presentation, their video. Um, just a little bit of, uh, my background. I was born in Gilmore Village in West Utica, and I loved playing in the dirt from when I was a kid. And I knew that I had to do something outside. I couldn't be stuck inside. And we moved from Gilmore Village to Blaine Dynasty. Uh, that's my grandmother's house. I grew up downstairs. She was upstairs. This picture was taken today. That tree, I propagated in college and gave it to my grandmother, and, uh, she took care of it. Sorry. Well, you talk about your grandmother, you know. Uh, I was the only boy in an Italian family, so. But, uh, you know, the only thing that nineteen-year-old Mike didn't know, you can't plant a ninety-foot Norway spruce on Blaine Dynasty. Uh, so they have topped it, and, you know, but, uh, but I knew from an early age that I wanted to get involved somehow in this field. Um, so I went to Morrisville College. My formal education, um, is in horticulture and landscape design. Um, I worked for Hamilton College for twenty years as an arborist and a horticulturist. Uh, I currently teach horticulture at Midstate Correctional. Uh, I've been a thirty-year member of the International Society of Arbiculture and New York State Arborist. Uh, so I've got, you know, the green in my veins. And, um, when this opportunity came about, and I was like, perfect way to end my career, to go back to the streets where I grew up and, and re-canopy, so. Um, so just some of the benefits that they spoke of, um, trees provide cooling, we know that. Um, Frank Miola knows firsthand. He's got a huge tree in the front of his parents' house on Elizabeth Street that I've seen since I was a kid, and it's still there cooling his parents' house. Um, trees help reduce the effects of climate change, clean our air, reduce noise through the filtering of sound, um, clean our drinking water. Trees provide us with oxygen, obviously, the most obvious, and they benefit wildlife. Um, some of the highlights that I wanted to point out that relate to our city, um, even though I've, I've been living in Clinton for thirty years. When I got the job at Hamilton, I was like, well, I'm gonna be here at least twenty years. So I moved my family there, but I'm still connected to the city. I've been a volunteer with the, uh, we used, we used to be the Parks Conservancy, where Green Utica, I've been volunteering with them for about twelve years now. Um, so that's my way of staying connected, uh, with the city. But, uh, you know, this study was done, and I'll give you my email address at the end. If anybody wants copies of these studies, I'd be more than happy to share. Uh, but just a ten percent increase in tree canopy in a neighborhood roughly equals twelve percent decrease in crime. And that's because you feel better in a neighborhood that's tree-lined, and you're not out in the heat, and you're not feeling agitated. Uh, so that's a study that was done by Landscape and Urban Planning. Um, trees contribute to our health. Um, you know, I mean, look how happy my wife is. I mean, we went for a walk in this, this is up in the Adirondacks. It's called the Cathedral Pines. It's a small patch of old-growth, uh, pine trees, but you just walk in there and you naturally feel better. And imagine if we can, you know, get these little microenvironments in our city going where someone who lives in an apartment can go to that space and just feel that. Um, you know, and there were studies done that it does help, you know, uh, with mental stress and anxiety and depression. And then trees improve cooling, uh, like I was talking with, about, you know, at Frankie's, uh, parents' house. Um, this is actually my house in Clinton. Fortunately, fifty years ago, someone planted three trees on the west side of the house. We don't have central air. We have one air conditioner that we turned on maybe five times a year. But those three trees planted strategically cool, cool the whole house. And in the first five years, you can reduce your energy bill by three percent. By fifteen years, you can reduce it by twelve percent. And, and that's a savings for everyone. Uh, trees increase our property values. That's a no-brainer. Uh, healthy, mature trees add an average of ten percent to a property's value. Um, I mean, we all know that. You know, the nicer the neighborhood is, the more, um, trees and, and nicer the landscape, the more your properties, uh, will increase. Uh, trees help reduce storm water runoff and flooding. Uh, so when the rain comes down, it'll hit the canopy, it intercepts it. Uh, you have transpiration, evaporation, and what it's doing is it's slowing the flow of the water, and it's being absorbed into the, uh, the pervious surface, and it's less of a strain on our stormwater system. Um, you know, we see the flooding in North Utica. That's a direct result of all the surface that we have. That is, it doesn't have trees, that the rain just comes down, hits the pavement, and, and takes off like wildfire. So it will definitely help, um, put less of a burden on our stormwater system. Uh, this is Taylor Ave in Corn Hill. This, I think, is one of the most important pictures. Um, so there's a study done in Modesto, California for ten years. They studied the effect of sun on blacktop. So what happens is the ultraviolet rays breaks down the blacktop, hardens it, and then it crumbles. So we've all driven around the city, so you notice when you're feeling all those bumps, look around. You won't see a tree. When you drive in South Utica, nice canopied streets, smooth pavement. And in that study, there's streets that haven't been paved in forty years, that the blacktop has lasted forty years because of the shade and, and conserving that. Um, so it is, it is, and I know that's one of the biggest things that you've heard for years, you know, is, you know, the condition of the road. So this will help not only save the conditions of the road, but save money down the road on repaving, um, costs. Uh, and this is the study. I'd be happy to, to share it with anyone. Um, you know, better pavement performance due to excessive tree state could translate into a less frequent repaving schedule and cost savings. Um, you know, the street superintendent in Modesto, California, estimated repaving could be deferred ten years on a well-strated street and potentially up to twenty-five years on a heavily shaded street. I mean, that savings alone, um, would be huge. And then Andy did mention, uh, some of our, uh, other partners. Um, we have Kimbria here with us tonight. She is a, um, a permaculture expert. Um, so what permaculture is, um, permaculture integrates land, resources, people, and the environment through mutually beneficial synergies, imitating the no-waste, closed-loop systems seen in diverse and natural systems. So what we're hoping to do is incorporate these in community parks, um, and schools, and areas where what you do is, as you can see from the, uh, diagram here- and schools and areas where what you do is, as you can see from the diagram here, in a small area, you can grow fruits, vegetables, herbaceous plants, and a canopy, all in a small area. And for those people who do live in apartments and they don't have the ability to do that, they can go to their local, I mean, we know how many parks we have. And if you go to see the parks, there's not much going on in them. So that's one of the things with the permaculture that we're going to try to do with our, with our other partners. And this is my email address, if you guys want to write it down, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And all this stuff, I'm telling you, is fact-driven, you know, and it's not something that I just took off the top of my head. And like I said, I've been blessed to be in this industry for over thirty years. And you can make a change. And I think this grant is really the catalyst to make the change for the city. And, you know, one of the other things we talked about doing is, the easiest thing is planting the tree. That's the easy part. It's gonna be five years of taking care of that tree to make sure that it thrives. Because we don't want them, because you can go around the city, you can see the trees that are just barely surviving that were planted because there was no aftercare. Aftercare is huge, that's what's gonna make it into a mature canopy. So we were talking of, City of Syracuse, through their cooperative extension, has a community tree steward program. It's all volunteer-driven. And we train people on pruning, how to properly mulch, how to take care of the trees. So if we can get a community tree stewardship going in East Utica, one going in West Utica, divide the city and go and look after these trees year after year, that's gonna make the difference. Because like I said, the easiest part, well, is planting. But of course, you gotta select the right species too, that's where I come in. You know, I have a friend who's already planted a thousand trees for us. And he's got, the trees that he's picked to plant came from Cornell's Urban Forestry Program. Trees that will survive in the urban setting. Salt, won't lift the pavement, won't lift the sidewalks. So we're really thinking this thing through, we're gonna get it right, you know, the first time we plant it and then look to take care of, take care of them in the afterthought, so. Does anybody have any questions I'd be happy to answer?
I think in this case, I'd like to ask just a story around, like, we're not getting into a giant thing, but I'll go around, I'll start from this side and go around. Councilor Large, the Granger? You good? Claus Motesta? Thank you, Councilman Williamson?
I have one question because the aftercare, like you said, you know, and it's gonna be part of the city. Are we gonna have dedicated people to actually water these things for, you know, water these trees?
Yeah, that's part, part of the grant, there's money built in for paid workers to water, to help with the planting.
So they're gonna be dedicated, you know, by John Tyler or whatever they call it?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I think there's one Parks Department employee.
There are four people from the Parks, you know, I had three or four.
Yeah, well, I think originally we had ten, because we were hoping to get ten million dollars. So we wrote in the grant, ten Parks employees. But now that was reduced to two million, obviously, you know, we have to scale it back. But Andy could probably answer better to, better to that than I could.
Actually, I was gonna wrap it all up because I think there's probably questions. So, and then obviously we can continue with the questions. But just, and obviously I know there's more business, so I wanna get, get out of your hair. But, um, so, so as I quoted in my DEC friend, this is, this was an opportunity of lifetime. So that's what I took it as. We actually, this application I gave you is the original application that was put in for ten million dollars. We didn't get ten million, we only got two. Just two million, it's a joke. It's still a lot of money, it's a lot of money for trees. But the good news is, when I wrote the grant, my grant team wrote the grant, it was me, NBCC professor, and a grant writer. Now, I have this guy. You think I should be excited? I have Kimbria. I have others, and now I have the USDA, we're gonna work together. So where I gave you this application, this application's gonna get rewritten. Obviously, I gotta rewrite it, we went from ten million to two million. But there's no way I'm gonna cut everything eighty percent. I want to maximize trees. We're gonna be looking at out-of-the-box ideas, volunteers. Originally, I had in here thirty employees. Ten DBW, ten outreach folks, interns, and ten folks from the refugee center. Obviously, I won't be able to do that. This is what I have in the grant is, so actually, to the nuts and bolts of it, I think the question out there is, how much is this gonna cost Utica? So this is a five-year grant. It's a drawdown grant. And because we only focused on the disadvantaged districts, seventeen districts, you can see behind me and in what I provided, it's pretty much half of the city running from west to east. And that provides us with no match. The city has no match in this. So it's two million dollars, drawdown, we don't have to have any money upfront. That being said, obviously, we're excited to have it. And we're gonna have to revise this proposal. I can provide a new narrative and budget once it's done. But I wanna give you the original because we don't have the revised done. But we will be working with the USDA to make that happen shortly. So.
Thank you. And Andy, you're not, you're not in our hair, I'm just gonna go quickly around. And if anyone else has any quick questions for Mike or you, we can service those now. But just, you know, Councilman Williamson, I think was just concerned with the watering because we've had some issues with that in the past, just taking care of the trees. But obviously, the answer is yes, he'll be taking care of them. So Councilman Petrus, do you have anything?
Yes, so after all that spiel, how many people are you gonna have to take care of?
So I'll handle that, actually, because Mr. Karas just explained that he has to rewrite the grant now because, or not, he doesn't have to rewrite the grant, the grant's been accepted, but it's now down to two. And he's gonna provide us with that, once he's done. He actually just answered that, so I didn't watch it after.
So just, just to add to that, in the budget, we actually specify all the dollars and cents. And all the thirty positions that I mentioned originally that were in this application, were hundred percent paid for, those are seasonal workers. What we have is, if you go to page twenty, you have my time, which is a very small amount, five hours per week. We have the certified arborist, which we have full-time, and we have a project manager. Now, those two are key positions. We can't do it as well, a project manager and a certified arborist. And this is the only thing that we did in the grant. The first year, it's, they're paid four hundred percent. So this is the only thing that the city will have to say, hey, we want these people, we want them long-term. Second year, their salaries, their French benefits is ninety, they get, the grant pays ninety percent, the city pays ten percent. Third year, grant pays eighty, city pays obviously twenty. Fourth year, seventy, fifth year, sixty-five. But that, keeping that in mind, we want this guy here after the fifth year. Even though he says he's gonna retire and he's gonna do this part-time, we want him here, full-time, part-time, however we can get him. And we certainly need a project manager. And the project manager that I have in mind is currently a facilities manager, which we desperately need in the city. So that, my plan was project manager, facilities manager. We have obviously a lot of facilities here, Mike Mahoney's gone. We have no facilities managers. That was my transition, to get this guy in here and have him stay long-term.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Urban? Thank you, Councilman Miola?
I just wanna thank you gentlemen for doing this, it's gonna be a fire city. And it's like, got us on the right track, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you, Councilperson Fred?
Ditto. I do think that there was one of the, one of the slides, I don't know if it was you, Mr. Mahana, or the video from the, from the USDA, that this is an investment in public safety. And that's what's really exciting about it, to me. What are your views about native species and the need to make sure that we're integrating native species into our plantings? Some people advocate for a minimum of thirty percent native species?
Yeah, so every block has a microenvironment. Every house has a microenvironment. What that soil is, how much sun it gets, how much moisture it gets. So you really won't be able to know, so I'm gonna walk every inch of the city, every block. And we do have the Davy inventory that was done four years ago, which is a good jump-off point. But I really won't know that till I walk and investigate every microenvironment. We will try to use some natives, but in some situations, we won't be able to. We'll have to use fastigated trees that don't branch out. But where we do have power lines, we'll have to use flowering crabs that stay below the power lines. Where we have salt, we can't put maple trees. So it will be, every little microenvironment will have its own, you know, type of tree that's gonna survive and thrive. And that's the most important thing.
Right. The other question is, I'm gonna assume that you're familiar with Heather, her name is Crop or Group's work at Hamilton College, who's used aerial photography in order to show just how much Utica has lost its tree cover?
Oh, I've known for, for years. For years, I've seen pictures of the city. And like I said, I've, you know, I've been in this industry for over thirty years and I've had colleagues when I go to conferences. So with my certification, I have to attend thirty continuing education credits every three years. So I'm constantly being educated in the field. It's not something I got thirty years ago and I just have this card or this plaque. So I'm constantly being educated on insects, diseases. Blue spruce, for instance, has a disease that's gonna kill every blue spruce. I haven't planted one in twenty years because I heard about it twenty years ago. So you have to know species, varieties. Emerald ash borer, who knows Emerald ash borer? Alright, yeah, more than I would think. That's, that's come and gone, all the ash trees are dead. That was twenty-five years ago. So, you know, so we will be site-specific on what we plan and look for in the future. And we're not gonna create monocultures, which means plant the same species. We're gonna diversify the species. And I grew up on Blaine Dynasty, my mom walked me down Rucker Street to downtown. And Rucker Street was like this, with elm trees. And then one day, we're walking downtown, and I'm like, why is it so bright? And all the elm trees are gone. So city planners were like, well, white ash looks just like an elm tree. So they planted all white ash. Then Emerald ash borer came and killed all the ash. So they created a double monoculture. So, and that's what we'll do, we'll diversify the species so we don't end up with some new insect that comes up from overseas and attacks another species, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Burmester?
I just wanna thank you and I've got nothing else.
Thank you, Councilperson Naolo? Alright, thank you very much for coming and presenting. Andy, thank you for the work you've done on this and we will move on with our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Reports from the city officers. Corporation council, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Finger Saul?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. And then when the chief does come back, I will go back to that. For now, we move on. Do you have a cash report?
City of Utica cash report for September twenty-twenty-three, total seventy-one point six-two-one million, received and filed.
Thank you very much. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals, First District. Councilperson Naolo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna report, we had a great quality-of-life clean sweep today. We went down Elizabeth Street Nichols and back up through Mary Street, hit about almost two-point-five miles. And it's great to see all the departments out there. And I know people always say it's, you know, it's a photo op, but then on the flip side, you hear that, well, nobody knows what's going on and they wanna know. So when you're out there and it's all hands-on-deck, it does not feel like a photo op. But thank you to everybody's hard work, the streets are looking great.
Thank you. Alright, Chief Williams, do you have anything to report?
No.
Thank you very much. Second District, Councilperson Burmester, you have four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass on.
Thank you. Third District, Councilperson Fred?
I just wanna say, many of us went to the Wynn Hospital opening on Sunday. I think many members of the council were represented. It was awesome. Las Vegas and Utica for a day. They did it, but they did a really great job. It was nice to have the governor in town. And I'm really excited about all the good things that are coming because of the hospital. So, and that's what I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Fourth District, Majority Leader, you know, it's the person Miola?
I just wanna wish everybody a happy Halloween and enjoy your families and especially enjoy the candy, thank you.
Thank you. Fifth District?
Just that Harvest on the Hill is coming up on October twenty-eighth. Anybody that wants to bring their kids, it's the whole, almost the whole block of, um, street of James Street. And it's a lot of fun. So if anybody has a chance to get out there and check it out, come check it out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sixth District, Councilperson Petrus?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Large, Minority Leader Mark Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Andy and Mike, thanks for everything you're doing. It's awesome, good for you.
I have.
Thank you. Councilor Large and President Protemp, Frank DeBrangio?
Nothing to report tonight.
Alright. And I will return to Councilperson Motesta, if she does have anything, but we're moving on, thank you. Alright.
She already yielded her time.
You're good?
She yielded her time.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Moving on to the legislation that we discussed in the pre-meeting conference. Resolution number one. Would someone like to move this?
Mr. President?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, Burmester's the second on this. This is City of Utica twenty-twenty-three proclamation for the Utica Fire Department for Fire Prevention Week. Summarize the legislation. Chief Ingersoll, would you like to say anything about this?
That it's Fire Prevention Week. Don't let, we've been in all the schools in the past two weeks. We continue to do community outreach. Our members have really stepped up, as usual, they put on a great show. We assisted a couple of the local schools with fire safety demonstrations and it's one of the great joys that we have. And we love getting out there in the community. If anybody is looking to do some fire station tours, they just gotta reach out to the fire department.
Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna summarize the legislation. Whereas the twenty-twenty-three Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, be it resolved, the City of Utica does hereby proclaim, October eighth through the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, is Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all the people of the City of Utica to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during the Fire Prevention Week twenty-twenty-three and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Utica Fire and Emergency Services. Your votes?
I just wanted to quickly say, I put this in there because I think every year that the fire department does a fantastic job coming into the schools and, you know, really giving the, you know, the background knowledge and understanding to make sure that, you know, not only the people in the community are safe, but the students at the school, at schools know, know as well. And I, I'm the fire prevention coordinator for my elementary school. So I tortured Chief Ingersoll throughout that, throughout that week, you know, and the fire department comes through every time. So I wanted to recognize them and thank them for all that they do throughout the week in the Utica City School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Your votes for the rest of them.
Nineties adopted.
Alright, the next piece we went over in committee was ordinance number two.
Sure, the only thing that I'm gonna say is that the legislation that we used to pass before, used to have the original transfer, the original budget and then the revised budget. There was a copy here that kinda just summarized. I knew that it didn't look familiar from the previous pieces that we passed before. Obviously, with the new budget director, she decided to do something new and I'm not even sure, quite sure who the new budget director is because maybe I've met her, maybe I haven't.
No, there isn't, actually. And someone is assisting with the transfer.
Okay, so just, I mean, obviously, this is new, so it didn't, I know- Okay, so just, I mean, obviously, this is new, so it didn't, I know that I was used to what Heather had transferred in, but I think maybe if we can have some clarification throughout the next E and A transfer with you guys, maybe you could talk to her and just explain what was expected from us.
Okay.
That was it. Thank you.
So are you moving this or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. This is an E and A transfer for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Be it ordained, city controllers here are authorized and directed to make the following transfer of funds from Section Eight miscellaneous fifteen thousand and Section Eight retirement eighteen thousand going to Section Eight office equipment for a sum of thirty-three thousand. Explanation what's papered to office. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to a whole slew of property. The first piece is sponsored by Councilmember Urban. This is thirteen eighteen Seymour Avenue. This is a resolution calling for the public hearing on the sale of, it would be held on November first, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. If we do pass this, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay.
Move it.
All right, thank you very much. This is for a sum of five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Your votes on the public hearing. Thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. The next piece is.
Motion to commit, Mr. President. Ordinance number four for the sale of thirteen eighteen Seymour Avenue.
Thank you very much. Any opposed, State Committee? Next piece is calling for a public hearing on the sale of Two Hobart Street. This is again sponsored by Councilmember Urban. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you very much. Again, November first, twenty twenty-three, seven P M. is when the public hearing will be held. If we pass this?
Move it.
Thank you. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to Committee Ordinance Number Six, the sale of Two Hobart Street.
Second.
Any opposed, State Committee? The next piece is sponsored by Councilmember Ailo. This is for the sale of eleven twenty-four and twelve hundred Parker Street for a sum of one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and forty-five cents. Again, November first, seven P M. will be the public hearing. You're fine with that? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Public hearing is now called. Thank you. Anyone want to move ordinance number eight, the sale of eleven twenty-four and twelve hundred Parker Street?
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to Committee Ordinance Number Eight, the sale of eleven twenty-four and twelve hundred Parker Street.
I'll second it.
All right. Any opposed, State Committee? Next piece is calling for a public hearing on the sale of fourteen oh two Martin Street. This is Councilmember Burmaster with the sponsor. Anyone want to second this?
Second.
Okay. We're going to go with Beatrice on that. A sum of ten thousand five hundred dollars. Again, November first will be the public hearing. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number ten, the sale of fourteen oh two Martin Street into committee, sir.
I'll second it.
Okay, any opposed, State Committee? Next piece, proposed resolution number eleven, calling for a public hearing at the sale of fourteen seventeen Erie Street. It's a sum of fifteen thousand dollars. Again, November first, seven P M. will be the public hearing. Pass. It's moved, it's sponsored by Burmaster. Second from Miola. Thank you. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
You.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to Committee Ordinance Number Twelve, the sale of fourteen seventeen Erie Street.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Any opposed? Ready? Next piece is another E and A transfer, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. This is ordinance number thirteen. Would someone like to move this?
I'd like to move it, Mr. President.
Second, Mr. President.
Okay, it's on the floor. This is from Parks Maintenance Wages, thirty thousand. It's going to Parks Maintenance Trees and Parks Maintenance Rentals for a total of thirty thousand.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Next piece is proposed resolution number fourteen, and not the last piece, just to remind everyone. This is a wine and beer permit, authorizing the sale of wine and beer to F X Matt Ruin Co. Sunday, December thirty-first, seven P M. to twelve-thirty A M. This is on Tennessee Street. This is near Z.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Okay, any, want to second that? Burmaster? All right, your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay, well, if you have one more piece, leave.
I'd like to move proposed ordinance number fifteen, please, Mr. President.
Second, Mr. President.
Correct. I will read that. We're moving it tonight. We don't need a Thursday rule because it is a piece of parking legislation. Be it ordained that Section Two sixteen, three-seventeen Schedule W handicap parking locations of the City of Utica Code be amended to include the following. Place one handicap parking sign in front of one thirty-six Lynch Avenue. Be it further ordained, proper signs be erected where necessary.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, there's no other business. I'd like to move to the close.
Second. All right. Good. Thank you very much.